Good evening, councillors and guests. Welcome to the Planning Committee meeting for Wyndham City Council this Tuesday, the 10th of August 2021. The Planning Committee meeting is being undertaken in line with the COVID-19 Omnibus Emergency Measures Act 2020, which provides the council to meet and is deemed to be open to the public if the meeting is streamlined on the internet. A copy of the recording will be available on the council website as soon as practicable. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I acknowledge the peoples of the Coolan nation as their traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built, we pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging. I will now say the opening prayer and welcome. We pray for guidance in the council's decision-making to make the best outcome, to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham. Councillors, welcome to tonight's meeting and staff. We also have some guests with us for the first item in tonight's agenda. So, the format of this meeting, councillors and guests, will be that each item will be heard separately. Council officers will present an overview of the report for that item. Any registered submitters will be invited to speak and then it'll be followed by a decision on that item. Item two on tonight's agenda is apologies and requests of leave of absence. Councillors, I will go around the room. If you can just, just put up your hand, just let me know that you're here. So, councillor Marcus. Thank you. I can see your hand gone up. Councillor Maynard. Thank you. Councillor Shaw is here. Councillor Barrera, thank you. Councillor Gilligan is here. Councillor Mafoud, you're here. Councillor Zakowski.
Present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hill, thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor McIntyre, thank you. Councillor Ramesh and councillor Hegeditch. Councillors, we're all here in attendance this evening and as a result of that, we have a quorum. We also have in attendance tonight, Mr Campbell Reed, who is the relevant director in this department. Mr Campbell Reed, are you available?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item three on the agenda is declarations by councillors of a disclosure of conflict of interest in any item in the agenda. Councillors, are there any conflicts of interest? Councillor Marcus, I believe you've got a conflict of interest in item 6.2. You're on mute, councillor Marcus.
Yes, that's regarding the racing club. I happen to be a board member of the racing club, so I have a conflict of interest in that and I believe that you're going to put that item third on the agenda so that I'll be able to leave the room.
No worries. Thank you, councillor Marcus. Well, as councillor Marcus indicated, councillors, we will be swapping items 6.2 and 6.3. We'll hear 6.3 first and then 6.2 second, but we'll get to that when we get to item six. Item four, confirmation of the previous minutes, the minutes of the previous planning meeting held on Tuesday, the 13th of July, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Zakowski, seconded, councillor Maynard. Councillors, I put the motion to a vote. All those favor? Against? Councillors, sorry, it wasn't clear as to who voted, so I'll just go back and check that again. Councillor Marcus, are you for or against the motion? Councillor Marcus, sorry, the motion on the table at the moment is the mover of the previous, we need to confirm the previous minutes. Councillor Marcus, are you for or against the previous minute?
I had my hand raised, so I'm for.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Maynard, are you for or against the previous minutes? For previous minutes. Councillor Shaw, are you for or against the previous minutes?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Barrera, are you for or against the previous minutes?
For, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Gilligan, for or against the previous minutes?
For.
Councillor Mafoud, are you for or against the previous minutes?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Zakowski, for or against the previous minutes?
For though, for, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councillor Hill, are you for or against the previous minutes?
For, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You, councillor McIntyre, for or against the previous minutes?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ramesh, are you for or against the previous minutes?
For, thank you.
And I'm for the previous minutes, so the motion has been carried. Item five, it's verbal submissions from our applicants and objectors. Mr Campbell Reed, do we have any people wishing to make a verbal submission this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have five people wishing to speak to item 6.1 this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, thank you, councillor, thank you, Mr Campbell Reed. I've been advised of a last-minute speaker that has withdrawn and will not be proceeding, so we will only have four speakers this evening, councillors. Item six of the agenda is the strategic and town planning. Item 6.1 is planning permit application, WYP 12610/20, construction of a bottle shop, reduction of the associated car parking requirement, use of land for the sale of packaged liquor and alternate, alternation of access in a road zone, category one, 18 to 20 and 22, Princess Highway, Werribee. The report is on pages seven to 46, recommendation is on page eight and the attachments are on page 47 to 77 of the, of the agenda. I will now invite council officer, councillor Peter Van Til, manager of planning and building to provide an overview of the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the application before you this evening is, as you've stated, an application for a, in general terms, a bottle shop, reduction in the associated car parking provisions and also the use of the land for the sale of a, another, a liquor license, so that the sale of land for packaged liquor. Council, within the report, in terms of the summary documentation, the, of note is the, the fact that the applicant in this particular situation has determined to proceed to VCAT and has subsequently lodged an appeal for failure to make a decision within the prescribed time of 60 days. So, in effect, council, what that means is that, notwithstanding the, the report itself, the, the recommendation that you see in front of you, in effect, is the, are the planning grounds that we wish to rely on to represent or to defend the position of council when this matter goes to VCAT, which is scheduled for the 28th and the 29th of September. So, in effect, what we require is a position of council so we can defend that position when we go in, in about a month and a half's time. Council, what is particular, or what is of particular interest with this application is that if we go to the recommendation and if we look at the, if we look at the grounds of, in effect, the grounds of refusal or the, or the grounds of contention, it is a position of, of the department that, from a urban design perspective, the application falls short. The amenity considerations, which I'm expecting, you're going to hear more from the surrounding residents after my submission, but there is a concern about amenity considerations. There is a concern about environmental design assessments. There is also a, an aspect of the build form as it relates to insufficient landscaping. There is also another consideration as, as it relates to the liquor license itself. Now, the Wyndham planning scheme allows a consideration of the cumulative impact of the number of liquor licenses within a particular area. So, that's addressed in the report as well and that, again, forms one of the grounds of, of refusal or concern that we have in this application. And I guess finally, the, the other concern is that from the concept of an orderly planning perspective, all things considered, it is a contention that this particular application is inappropriate for the site. Council, it's also worth noting that there is a current live permit application or current live permit on this site and that is a three-storey office development, which we would generally describe as a, as a mixed-use development with cafe on the ground floor and offices above. So, in terms of a, I guess, an alignment with the strategic objectives of the, of the zoning and the structure plan for the area, the idea is to get more people on the street, to activate a frontage and to, I guess, have a, have an application that is employment generating, activates a street frontage and generally fits the objectives of that zone. So, we do have an application, it's three-story, so in terms of its build form, it is actually larger than this particular application, but again, from a design perspective and a functionality perspective, it is considered that an application for a Dan Murphy with a resultant drive-in bottle shop is inappropriate for that particular site. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Maynard. I now invite the speakers to make a submission. Councillors, can we, we'll take questions after all the speakers have spoken and we'll go around the councillors to ask if anyone has any questions, so just make a note of those questions. To all the speakers, you have five minutes to speak, so I'm, we'll be asking Brian Gosney to begin, please.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me all right? Okay, just to, my objections to the Dan Murphy's bottle shop are, the first one, which has already been mentioned, I think the number of bottle shops already in the Werribee, in and around the Werribee township, number 11, and I think that is plenty for the township. The second point is the new trading hours that are posted on the current site are looking for an extension from a 9pm closing at night out till 11pm and I personally think that is totally unacceptable because not only does it mean that they can trade till 11 o'clock, but it also means that deliveries can also be made up until that time at night unless other strict curfew delivery times are made and enforced. My third objection is for the, towards the crime and unsocial behaviour. Now, I've been, I was a Woolworths supermarket manager for 17 years and I can tell you what it is like to be physically abused, assaulted, been spat in the face in times where you come up against these shoplifters and, and criminals and it is not a good experience and we do not want that unsocial behaviour in and around our neighbourhood. My last concern is probably the biggest one and that is the traffic entry and exit from Wattle Avenue. Now, that to me is a fatality waiting to happen. Having worked in, also in the Transport and Distribution Centre at Woolworths in, in the last five years of my employment at Woolworths, I was involved in the safety, safety of the transport trucks and drivers and I can tell you now that if a semi-trailer or any truck for that matter comes in off Prince, off the Princess Highway into Wattle Avenue and tries to turn into the, into that site as, as proposed on the plan, it is just not going to happen because trucks are going to have to go across over into the, the upcoming lanes and the turning circles of the truck will make that happen and also that is just a disaster waiting to happen. So, I don't believe that the, that any truck, because there will be more than just the Woolworths semi-trailer, there will be more delivery trucks because you've got snack foods, cigarettes, general merchandise, bags of ice, a variety of other products outside of liquor that will need to be delivered to that site. So, I, I, I think that that is just a disaster waiting to happen. And also, I would say that if the trucks do not come in off the Princess Highway and try to turn off Wattle Avenue and if they do come up Wattle Avenue, I don't think the residents in Wattle Avenue are going to be overjoyed about the fact that we've got semi-trailers, et cetera, et cetera, coming up and down Wattle Avenue. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Gosney. We now have Mr Stephen Sanderson up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can, can you all hear me?
We can, thank you, Stephen.
Madam Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Stephen Sanderson. I live at the end of Manta Court. This meeting is regarding planning for my immediate back neighbour. I realise that we cannot control exactly what happens on our next-door blocks, but this proposal affects not only the adjoining and nearby residences, but is a prominent site on the approach to Werribee Township. Rhetorically, I ask, is, is a big bottle, big shop selling a legal drug of addiction to some appropriate? This shop is, I'm going to call it big retail. It is not a shop just for the benefit of us local people. Many Dan Murphy stores close at eight o'clock, nine o'clock on Thursdays, Fridays and just six o'clock on Sundays. This store wants 11 o'clock every night. The high turnover of customers, first liquor, by the way, has a 30-minute limit on, in their parking. The high turnover of customers will create noise and extra traffic on our local roads and noise along the back of their block against my fence and others and extra traffic on local roads. Their car park and loading bays at the back of their property. If their parking is insufficient, customers will have to park a little bit away from the shop because there's no parking right by the shop in Wattle Avenue or Princess Highway and we can therefore expect trolleys to be littering the streets. People probably won't take them back. Antisocial behaviour could well extend into the civic centre grounds. I don't know if you have problems now, but can see it may well increase. I understand that you will have a copy of my submission to VCAT. It's quite a lengthy thing, that's half of it. It contains the grounds that I've got against granting the permit and also in conclusion, some issues that should the permit be granted and I commend that document to you. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Mr Sanderson. I now have Jeff, Mr Jeffrey Gooke to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I've been in Werribee now for, well, I started Hoppers Crossing in 1970, been in Wattle Avenue now for, I think it's 13 and a half, 14 years. When we first came to Werribee, we drove down the Princess Highway and we thought, how good's this, we're going to live in Werribee. An open vista, for the want of a better word, housing on the right-hand side, open vista on the left-hand side. We now have a telecom building, the possibility of a Dan Murphy's. Stephen and Brian have touched on a couple of points I had was, how many more liquor outlets do we need? Stephen's touched and traffic, do we need that? I don't think we need that anymore. I think what we need now is people to come to Werribee and say, how good's this? We have an avenue of honour, which could be better, could be better displayed. It's going to impinge on what we've got there now. If we fix up the avenue of honour, put a rubbish bin down near the bus stop down there, fix up the road, we've got something good to look forward to, but I don't think we need another bottle shop. That's about 11 and about 5k radius from Kelly Park, I think it is, and I'm including Woodbill Park Shopping Centre there, I haven't got it out as far as Hoppers Crossing, but I don't think we need any of that anymore in Werribee. I think we just need the place beautified a little bit. It might cost the council one and a half million to buy the block of land back. I don't know what their position is, I doubt it's the proper position to be in at the moment, but I can understand that, but maybe that's down the track, we're looking to make it something a little bit better than what we've got. Already the traffic, we've touched on the traffic coming around there now, it's, well, if you can stand there and the number of cars going up and down Wattle Avenue and what have you, we don't need it. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr Gooke. And last one is Mr Graham Smart.
Right, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I want to focus on access in and out of the site itself and on the impact on the surrounding residential area. First, from the Princess Highway heading west, cars entering the site will disrupt other traffic and pose a serious risk of collisions, particularly in peak hour. And the Wattle Avenue entry and exit presents similar risks plus the fact that the avenue itself is only 10 metres wide at the exit, reducing to seven metres as you cross La Rose Place intersection heading south. And I thoroughly agree with the, the comments earlier about trucks trying to get in and out of that, that spot there, particularly right, right next to our brand-new traffic control intersection with our new overpass, which is supposed to give us all more flexibility and ease of access to, to different parts of Werribee. It's proposed that all traffic will be directed left or south out of the Wattle Avenue exit. It's logical that many of the drivers will in fact be planning to continue their journeys further to the west, considering that they've just come from the east heading west, which takes me to my second point. The first opportunity for them to head west will be via a rat run through Slattery Street and Sins Avenue. These streets are again only seven metres wide and over the 500-metre route, there are three 90-degree bends, three curves and two intersections and it needs to be remembered that these are residential streets. Cars are regularly parked down both sides, families with young children and old people live there, including myself. I don't believe that this is any place for through traffic funneling from a poorly placed retail outlet. So, in summary, my first objection is that the access in and out of the location make it unsuitable for the purpose that's proposed, that's proposed to go there. And second, if the development were to go ahead, directing traffic through, through traffic into the residential streets is just unacceptable. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr Smart. Councillors, as all the speakers have now spoken, I will ask each councillor if they've got any questions of either the speakers or Mr Van Til. Councillor Ramesh.
No questions from me, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor McIntyre?
No questions from me, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
No question from me.
Councillor Zakowski?
No, but I'd like to say thank you to the people who came to speak tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Mafoud?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Gilligan?
No, thanks.
Councillor Barrera?
No questions from me.
Councillor Shaw?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Maynard?
No questions, Madam Mayor, but echo councillor Zakowski's comments.
Councillor Marcus?
No, but I would like to thank the council officers for the thorough report that they have done and also the four speakers tonight, you've certainly done your homework well and I thank you and congratulate you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillors, I now will call for a mover of a motion. Is there a mover that would like to, is there anyone that would like to move? Councillor Maynard, followed by councillor, seconded by councillor Shaw. Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
You're on mute, Peter.
Yeah, that's better. That's going to be the bane of my existence. Thank you, councillor Shaw. Certainly, the rec, the comments or the, the recommendations for refusal by the officers are quite extensive and I certainly agree with them. One of my concerns is most certainly that, you know, developers or in this, this regard, proponent of, of, you know, can to a degree bypass the process and go straight to VCAT. I do have concerns about that. The other concern that I have primarily is the fact that, you know, if I'm travelling down Princess Highway, you know, heading into Werribee, I don't want to go through the lights, I can just take a quick left turn and exit straight through the back of the bottle shop, straight on the Wattle Avenue and go up to the top end of Wattle Avenue into Dunton's Road. I don't need to go through the lights. So, I think it's poor design and just a bad place for it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Councillor Shaw, as the second, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I will. A couple of comments, yeah, thank you to the speakers, very much appreciate your time and putting that forward this evening. Both parcel, my view, both parcels of land never should have been zoned ACZ1, but that happened in a term of council I was not involved in and actually not the topic of tonight's discussion, that's for another day, but it is important to note that this site is zoned ACZ1 and is located in a mixed-use area, unfortunately. I do support the officer recommendation and most of what the objectors have said. In particular, truck access via Wattle Avenue is a huge problem for this site and we are already having trouble with this, in this local area following completion of the Tarnit Road Bridge and today I saw an oversized truck carrying wood heading down Wattle Avenue, making its way to the Tarnit Road Bridge. So, that's actually something we're working So that's actually something we're working with council officers to try and stop. And a development like this would only continue to encourage with the truck access actually onto Wattle Avenue there, which I think is disappointing and not what we're looking for. However, just a final comment that I think it's important that we do note and are aware that this site will be developed at some stage. It is owned by somebody. It's a large parcel of land, not far from the Warriby city centre, and it won't stay vacant forever. I'm not saying I agree with that, but I'm saying in how it's positioned and how this council in previous terms zoned this parcel of land means that it will be developed unfortunately at some stage. So something we all need to be thinking about. But thank you, Madam Mayor, for that opportunity. Thanks again to the speakers and thank you to council officers for a very comprehensive report, which I completely support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Councillor Marcus, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you very much. Yes, I agree with the recommendation, the work that the council officers have put into it. One, one thing that I've got a real concern about, if this does go ahead, is for the residents that back on to this site. There will be, one of our speakers mentioned all of this, that, you know, the cars will be coming in and out and for them to want this to go through till eleven o'clock at night is totally unfair. The back of that building faces out into Princess Highway, which will not be an attractive look for our city. I also agree that we've got more than enough problems in Warriby itself. And we certainly do not want any more bottle shops that are so closely associated. Because we're now known as the bottle shop industry of Warriby. So I just hope that when the council go to VCAT to defend their, what they have put in this decision, that they will put forward a very, very good argument why this should not go ahead. Now, this block of land has been owned by many, many people over the period of time that I've lived in this city. It will be developed. And, but let's hope they perhaps can go back to the doctors rather than another bottle shop for this city because and as the, the business people are always knew that when they closed Cherry Street, Wattle Avenue was going to become the rat run, and we're not wrong. So we therefore do not want another bottle shop there encouraging more people to come to that part of the city and bypass the town centre itself. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor McIntyre, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would. And I would like as well to first thank everybody for appearing on this planning meeting. It's not easy at any time to speak and certainly not, certainly not online in these sort of circumstances. It's disappointing that the applicant hasn't appeared this evening, so we're not able to ask questions of them. I do hear the concerns of the community loud and clear, both through your objections that have been given here verbally, those written and the statements of grounds submitted to VCAT. I believe as a council, we do need to say no to developments that don't comply with our strategies and frameworks that have been created. And I do support the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
Sorry, just trying to find the mute button. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to start by saying thank you to the speakers for coming today and expressing your concerns. I'll keep it very brief. There are clearly some issues with the administration and compliance of this application that need to be addressed. So I agree with the recommendation for refusal of this proposed development. Thank you.
Councillor Hill, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also like to thank the speakers for coming in to bring your concerns to council. And we definitely, yeah, we definitely hear you. And I also would like to support officers' recommendation to refuse to grant such a permit. And also I just want to encourage the residents, in case this case being brought to VCAT, it is important to attend a VCAT hearing, to join as a party, to continue to make sure this one doesn't get approved by VCAT. Thank you.
Councillor Barrera, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, look, I echo what's been said. I support the council officers' recommendations here. It is a shame the applicant hasn't shown tonight. I, I agree with councillor McIntyre there. Can I thank also the, the four speakers who have come tonight? Can I also thank you for your campaign over quite some time now to fight this development? And, and that thanks also goes to all of the other objectors who bothered to put in writing their objections to this. This development has fallen short in so many ways. I can't believe that, you know, within a kilometre, we have four bottle shops that you can walk to and yet somebody thinks we need another one. I agree with the speaker who said, this is not what we want to see when we travel down the highway coming into the CBD of Warriby. It's the last thing we need in this activity zone as we try to build a livable city. The reduction to car parking is, is, you know, really they've got a bit of a hide asking for that, given that people will be coming in their cars to park, to go into the shop and buy. So I support the position of council and I think we can and we should try to control as much as we can what we allow to be built in this city.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this item?
Yeah, briefly, thanks very much, Madam Mayor. And I too, of course, acknowledge and thank the speakers this evening and certainly echo the points that councillor Barrera has made about the importance of community activation around these types of issues and the weight in which that's given, not just, of course, at our decision making level, but hopefully to a VCAT level. I guess what I wanted to say was, this will be an important test around the strategic justification that we placed on this site. I actually think it is so important that it is an activity centre zone because we have the ability to then frame the very purpose in which that land should be used. And I certainly echo the point that a bottle-o is not the best use of land, notwithstanding the fact, of course, at the moment, there actually is a permit for the land for a three storey multi, sorry, mixed use complex, which does demonstrate that this would be, should it be approved by VCAT, a substandard development in comparison to what councillors ultimately approved as the responsible authority on this site. So I think, given that there is an existing permit that's been approved with a far better urban design and indeed purpose for this site, that there already is a permit approved on this land consistent with the activity centre zone. I would find it bizarre that VCAT would not give weight to both of those elements and ultimately refuse this permit in terms of the bottle-o application. So I am looking forward to seeing what VCAT does on this matter. I think, as I've said, it'll be an important test around the structure plan that underpins this. And I've been very vocal about structure plans in other parts of the established parts of our city for the very reason that these, you know, residents that have come on tonight have been talking about the change in livable neighbourhoods and making sure we're doing everything to protect and preserve and ultimately optimise the land use in these sites. So thank you for those that have come on this evening and we're certainly with you clearly by the people that have spoken in favour of refuse this. And this will continue to enhance our overall decision making here at Wyndham City. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillor Mufford, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Zakowski, would you like to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor, I don't, I don't believe there's anything I can contribute further than what's already been mentioned, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, councillors. There's been no speakers against the motion. I now move the motion to a vote. Councillor Maynard, for or against? You need to articulate it, please.
For, Madam Mayor, sorry, have it.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Marcus?
For, Bladde Mayor.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ramesh?
Sorry, for.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For the motion, thank you.
Councillor Gilligan?
For, thanks.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion.
And I'm for the motion and therefore the motion has been carried. Councillors, we now move on to item six point three of the agenda. Our guests are welcome to leave, or they are welcome to stay on if they like, but it's up to you if you would like to sit around and speak, listen to the rest of our meeting, otherwise you're welcome to leave. Councillors?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Councillors, as I previously mentioned, councillor Marcus has a conflict in six point two, so we'll be looking at six point three in the first and then we'll come back to six point two. So item six point three, I will be handing over to Mr. Aaron Childs. So the item six point three is the Avalon Corridor Strategy Project Update and Commencement of Second Public Consultation Period for Stage Four. The report is on pages one hundred and thirty-nine to one fifty-two, recommendation on page one hundred and forty, and the attachments are on pages one fifty-three to two twenty. Mr. Aaron Childs, manager of Urban Futures, we'd like an overview of the report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Avalon Corridor Strategy is a land use strategy commissioned by the City of Greater Geelong and Wyndham City Council in collaboration with the Victorian Government's Department of Environment, Land, Water and Planning. The strategy is being developed in response to a Plan Melbourne twenty seventeen to twenty fifty policy direction to maintain a non-urban, non-urban break between Geelong and Melbourne, specifically between Larra and Warriby. To protect significant cultural landscape and biodiversity values and safeguard important infrastructure and assets in the corridor. Initial community consultation on the Avalon Corridor occurred in November twenty sixteen and was used to inform the development of the draft strategy, including a framework plan to guide land use within the Avalon Corridor. The strategy seeks to set the strategic direction for land use between Warriby and Larra. And the key project directions identified during the initial phases of the strategy include retaining that non-urban break between Geelong and Melbourne, considering the landscape values of the corridor and investigating the need for additional planning controls to protect significant views. Facilitating the expansion of the Avalon Airport and protecting the airport from encroachment by non-compatible land uses. Investigating the need for and opportunities for employment land close to the airport to accommodate businesses that support the airport. Planning for future changes resulting from infrastructure investments in the study area such as the Outer Metropolitan Ring Transport Corridor, continued growth of Avalon Airport, Avalon Rail Link and future development if it is approved of the Bay West second container port for Victoria. The draft Avalon Corridor Strategy is an example of collaboration and working in partnership with an adjoining council to further land use planning in a coordinated manner. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank councillors for the significant interest they have shown in relation to this important strategic project and for the questions they have sought information on. The report before the planning committee seeks council's support to proceed with a six week collaborative consultation period in conjunction with the City of Greater Geelong in order to receive feedback on the draft strategy from key stakeholders and the community. This is known as stage four of the project. The consultation proposed will enable the community to provide submissions and feedback on the draft Avalon Corridor Strategy and for this to be taken into consideration in seeking to finalise the strategy. Madam Mayor, I commend the report to the planning committee.
Thank you, councillor, Mr. Charles. Councillors, I will now ask for any questions of Mr. Charles. So I'll start with councillor Hill. Do you have any questions of Aaron?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor McIntyre, any questions of Aaron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I don't have any questions. I believe Aaron and the team have been really helpful in answering any questions in previous discussions and consultations, so I have no additional questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ramesh, would you like to ask any questions of Mr. Charles?
No questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Marcus, would you like to ask any questions of Mr. Charles?
I would like to thank Aaron and I, and I think it was Shaun and Elio who had to give me a separate briefing the other day and it was an excellent briefing, which I'm going to ask that we have more briefings like that. This is a very large parcel of land in between and it, as you know, Avalon Airport is in the City of Greater Geelong. There is very important parts of our environment that do need to be protected.
Marcus, sorry. Just, just, I should, got a question?
All right, all right, I'm leaving. Thank you. I'm gone.
Councillor Marcus? Councillor Maynard, do you have a question?
No questions, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councillor Shaw, do you have a question?
Nothing for me, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Barrera, do you have a question?
No, I had asked all my questions this morning and I thank Aaron the team for spending time answering them.
Councillor Gilligan, do you have a question? Sorry, you're on mute, councillor Gilligan.
Hi.
Thank you. Councillor Mufford, do you have a question?
No, thank you.
And councillor Zakowski, do you have a question?
Sorry, no, no, I don't, Madam Mayor, but I do wish now I had have saved a couple for the benefit of the public, but Aaron, Aaron was very gracious in answering all my questions, so thank you, Aaron.
Okay, thank you, councillors. If there are no further questions, I now seek a motion. Councillors, do I have a mover for a motion? Councillor Maynard, seconded by councillor Hill. Councillor Maynard is the mover of the motion. Would you like to speak on the item?
I remember this time. Although I was a bit slow, I need to get that mute button in the right spot. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I commend officers for working in collaboration with the officers from the City of Greater Geelong. It is quite a large parcel of land. I think it's somewhere about a hundred kilometres or something from memory. I just can't remember off the top of my head, but it is a huge parcel of land. A couple of points, it's a couple of dot points that I would just like to quote. The Avalon Corridor Strategy is to maintain or reinforce, if you like, a break or a space between Geelong and, and Geelong and Warriby or metropolitan and country, if you like, regional. Certainly to protect the ongoing operations of the Western Treatment Plant. Encourage strategic land uses with a focus on employment generating activities, I think is quite important, Madam Mayor. And certainly some of the importance of economic and transport connections between Warriby and Geelong, just to name a few. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Councillor Hill, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very pleased to hear this project is now ready to proceed to stage four and I'm very happy to endorse this document to go off a public consultation. So our community has six weeks from August eleventh until September twenty first to give feedback. I'd like to encourage our residents to participate if they are concerned about the forecast noise. So this Avalon Corridor Strategy provides long-term strategic vision for the Avalon Corridor to twenty fifty in order to guide planning decisions and to ensure the best use of land. And I personally can't wait to witness the exciting plans, including the green break between Geelong and Melbourne and the rail, rail network, robotic farms and driverless cars in action. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting this motion.
Councillor McIntyre, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would. I think it's important and there's obviously a strategic land use framework for this corridor. Our green spaces are very important for all of us for many reasons and we need to maintain that non-urban green break between Geelong and Melbourne, as has been stated. We are also helping to deliver significant employment growth in this area. Our community needs more local jobs. Having these polycentric centres of employment and not just heading into Melbourne CBD, sixty to seventy percent of our employers, employees pre-COVID headed previously. This, of course, needs to be balanced with noise concern, themes like environment, heritage, movement and access. Public consultation will not only happen online but also in person. Online, there'll be a facility for this information to be accessible in a variety of languages to enable our wider multicultural community to be involved. And I agree for this, therefore, to go out to public consultation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Zakowski, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, I would, Madam Mayor, thank you. This, this is the sort of really big, big picture thinking and long-term thinking that Wyndham residents expect from us as a council. Having, having been through the presentation, having had all my questions answered, it's a very exciting proposition. it's a very exciting proposition to know that we're going to have this level of detail and preparedness for the future of that area. I commend absolutely all the officers involved and the hard work that they have taken part in. And I'm very excited about the whole thing and I'm very pleased to be councillor at this time and this place.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Councillor Mufford, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, briefly, I think councillor McIntyre summarised pretty much what I would have said, with the exception of one point, and that relates to the Western Grasslands Reserve. I do have concerns in relation to ultimately the future conflicts we're going to have with regard to the future land use of that site and making sure it's protected and preserved as best as it reasonably can be as conservation land is important. We've seen, of course, through the strategic resource overlays that are occurring within that patch, so in other words, quarries being approved and the material impact that then has on the aderaterial roads like the Land Road and others is obviously of continued importance to this city. And I certainly do reiterate the point made by councillor McIntyre about that fundamental buffer between what is metropolitan and what is regional. And I think the people of Little River, the people of Larra and Geelong ultimately talk to that distinction. That is where the boundary is ultimately drawn and I think clearly this document will give that certainty on both sides about the geographics over here in Melbourne's west. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillor Barrera, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a couple of points. Look, I commend the officers for this report and the very detailed briefings that they've provided to us. It is a big project and it's an exciting project. I look forward to seeing the feedback from the consultation from our residents. I think it's been a great example of a partnership with Geelong City. I'm particularly excited about the potential employment opportunities that will come from it and the protection to the green wedge and environmental spaces. And I think it's worth pointing out the work that's been done towards protection of cultural heritage as well and that this is really the first time that council officers have worked really closely with traditional owners to have a cultural values assessment done as well in determining this project. So congratulations to the council officers.
Councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
Nothing for me, Madam Mayor.
And I understand councillor Marcus has left the meeting, so councillors, as a result, there have been no speakers against and now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Maynard?
For.
For.
Thank you. Councillor Hill?
For, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Zakowski?
Definitely for the motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For the motion.
And councillor Shaw?
For.
And I'm also for the motion, the motion is therefore carried. Councillors, we move on to item 6.2, which councillor Marcus did have a conflict of interest in but has subsequently already left the meeting, so we'll move to item 6.2 in any case. So item 6.2 is a planning application, a planning permit application, WYP 12719/21 for demolition of a building, grandstand and construction of building and works for a new building in a heritage overlay in the special zone 2 to 10 Bolbon Road in Werribee. The report is on pages 78 to 101, recommendation on page 79 to 80, the attachments are on page 102 to 138. Mr Van Til, you're up again to provide an overview on this report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, the genesis of this application, if you like, probably stems back in two areas. And the first is, I guess, a study undertaken by the applicant to look at, if you like, the structural integrity of the building itself. And I guess the condition of the grandstand is contained in the report, just in terms of a summary of the condition that building is in. So I guess as part of the pre-application, which in effect predates the lodgement of the application, council officers met with the applicant, but council officers also engaged the services of our heritage expert. So I guess based on the pre-work, and again, this is contained in the report, council's heritage expert in supporting the request for demolition probably had a couple of caveats on this application and I think it's very important as it relates to the first point, and that is that if the grandstand is demolished, what is required is a, in effect, archival documentation of the grandstand. So the proponent and their consultant actually undertook an archival record and submitted that to the Werribee Historical Society. So there was a lot of pre-work in effect before the application was lodged. So once the application was lodged, as part of a, if you like, a regular planning application, we advertised the application. And it's interesting to note that as part of the, or as a result of the advertising process, we have not received any objections to this particular application. So if we had the Historical Society on board in terms of the citations and they're happy with that, you'll probably note that that component is actually missing as a permit condition. And the reason we left that out is because it's already happened. So in terms of duplicating the process cycle, they've already done that, so they've done the pre-work, so that was fine. As we go through the application itself, we are then governed by, if you like, the requirements for an assessment within a heritage overlay. It's part of the Wyndham Planning Scheme. And I think it's important that when you look at, or when you make an assessment against the provisions of the heritage overlay, you're also governed by the citation as it relates to that particular place. Now, if we look at the citation, and again, it's contained in the report, as it relates to the Werribee racecourse, what is interesting is that generally speaking from a heritage position, you are ordinarily looking at a built form, as in a building. But what is interesting in this citation is that the actual citation relates to the ongoing use of the site since 1861 as a racecourse. So the heritage significance is primarily based on the fact that for over 150 years, one of few within Victoria, racecourses has continued to have been used. But we then look at the grandstand, we look at that building itself, and again, it's contained in the report, but the actual ground level was built in the 1930s with the actual grandstand or the second level built in approximately the 60s. And it's understood that there have been, I guess, variations to that from that particular point in time. So the advice from our heritage architect was that support is given for the demolition based on archival records being undertaken, which has happened. And I think it's also important to note as well that in terms of the footprint of the grandstand, the site itself, what has happened there is that the footprint is the same, which is approximately 330, 340 square metres. So in effect, the footprint is being replaced like for like. If the application to demolish is successful, what would happen is that there would be a purpose-built structure on the same footprint, which would be used for, and again, it's in the report, but it's containing amenities, jockeys' room, stewards' room, weight room, owner's room and bar. So councillors, in effect, we've gone through the process. The recommendation points out to a support for the demolition based on the fact that the citation is such that it's not at odds with the citation. The heritage advice is such that support is granted. No objection from the Werribee Historical Society. And also as far as the internal referrals were concerned, so internal departments, there were no objections throughout the organisation in terms of officer positions on it. So through you, Madam Mayor, that's the summary of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Gilligan. Councillors, questions of Mr Van Til? I'll commence with councillor Ramesh.
No questions, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre?
No questions, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
No questions, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Zakowski?
No, thank you.
Councillor Mufford?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Gilligan?
No, no.
Councillor Barrera?
No questions from me.
Councillor Shaw?
I've got a couple of points of clarification I'd like from Mr Van Til, please.
Yep, please proceed.
I want, just to confirm, I appreciate that summary, Peter, but just to confirm, the Yaw Grandstand has not been used for many years due to safety concerns. The structural engineers' report found the grandstand a major cracking, corrosion of concrete and steel elements, concrete spaling, flaking and safety concerns. The report found the grandstand had no heritage significance or architectural importance and the replacement building will be a single-storey building at the same location and will be used for jockeys and horse owners. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that is entirely correct. And I guess an additional point is that, as stated previously, the new building occupies the identical footprint of what is there at the moment.
Thank you. And just to confirm, the heritage protection relates to the long-standing use of the land for a racecourse rather than specific buildings such as the grandstand?
Through you, Madam Mayor, absolutely, as is contained in the citation.
And the grandstand has not been specifically identified as a place of heritage significance, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Mayor, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shaw, any other questions? Councillor Maynard, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillors, as there have been no other questions, I am now requesting a mover of the motion. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Shaw?
Thank you.
Seconded by councillor Maynard. Councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
No, I don't, but I will reserve my right of reply.
Thank you. Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, I think with the questions that councillor Shaw asked and the coverage by Mr Van Til, that covered everything. Just reiterating that this grandstand is not covered by the overlay, it's the actual racecourse, so I don't have an issue with that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Councillor Barrera, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this item?
Briefly, the officer comment in relation to the heritage advisor made that this particular subject site should consider whether or not a long-term development plan is required. Officers in their response indicated that it wasn't within the scope of the application. But it is a very important point, I think, in terms of the future of this site and where it's heading in terms of the potential for long-term development. I do think this will become more of a prominent site with a question mark and one that I look forward to over the course of the term answering, notwithstanding the point that has been made in recent times around these particular special use zones being impacted by the windfall tax model that may or may not be introduced into the future. So I do look forward to seeing some more work in this space. I think this, whilst is in isolation, an important application, there are still more broadly within it important questions about this site. And I know that that will continue to be a topic of conversation undoubtedly among the Irromu Ward councillors and probably the economic portfolio holder as well. But I did think it was worth highlighting that, given that there was an advisor as part of this report that had mentioned it and I do agree with them as part of that. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillor Mufford, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Zakowski, would you like to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councillor Hill, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor McIntyre, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry, I was struggling to unmute myself. I would just like to speak briefly as well to just reiterate some of the points being mentioned and the reason for my decision. So I understand that often the word heritage and demolition heard together does bring a lot of concern to people. It's important to clarify here what is actually protected. And as is said, the heritage protection relates to the land for the use of the racecourse rather than the specific buildings. The grandstand has not been specifically identified as a place of heritage significance. And as council officer Peter Van Til explained, its heritage elements have been archived with the Werribee Heritage Association. The architectural integrity has also been compromised of this building due to the modifications made. And the grandstand, as we know, in a partly derelict condition at the moment. Therefore, I will be voting in favour of the racecourse grandstands demolition. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Ramesh?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillors, there have been no speakers against, however councillor Shaw has reserved her right of reply, her right to speak. I'm just wanting to reach out to see if she would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just briefly, I put my points of clarification up early in relation to this site. I support the officer's recommendation and thank them for the report. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Councillors, I now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
And councillor Ramesh?
For.
I'm also for the motion and therefore the motion has been carried. Councillors, I believe that that was the last item, I'll just check the agenda. Thank you, there is no confidential business this evening and therefore I declare this meeting closed at 8.04. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thanks, councillors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone.